I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July eleventh, twenty eighteen, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried. We will begin with board reports.
So I am enjoying the summer. Been very, very busy, but around the farm, I've been doing a lot of fun things here, but the other night, my husband and I treated ourselves to a show at Newtown Players, which is three night theater, had a great time. We went to see Nine to Five. If you have not seen it, make sure you go. It is entertaining, it's funny, for some people that are around my age. Some of the outfits will bring back some great memories and some chuckles, because the one lady had on this green outfit that polyester with bell bottoms, and I said, oh, I had one of those, and it was just a different color, but so it was a great show, so if you have a chance to go and see it, please do. I think it's like Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sundays. For the, I think it's like this coming weekend, and I think it's the following weekend, too. I think they have it for three weekends, so. That's what I've been up to.
Well, just by coincidence, my board report is the same, the same show, Hamilton, Hamilton two. The, it won't be that long, of course. Just echoing what Mrs. Weber said, the Nine to Five production was very entertaining. If you recall, the movie was produced back in nineteen seventy-nine. It was about the period of Title VII, women's rights, so it was very, very fitting screenplay. This production is a little racier than the movie. I would say it's a PG seventeen, probably. That's not to deter anybody. Adults are certainly welcome to see it. The storyline is, I'm sure most of you know, it's a story of Mr. Hart, who's a CEO of a company that's predominantly, the office is predominantly, uh, women, and he's a sexist, egotistical, bigoted, hypocritical sexist, and that's sort of the role that Mr. Hart plays. And the three ladies, I won't go into the storyline, but it's very, very entertaining, and they, it's suffice it to say that the ladies win and he loses, and it's, again, it's a little bit racy, but done in very, very good taste. So I would encourage everybody to go see it. It's playing, I think, as you said.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I think the Sunday is a matinee.
Right, I think it's the next couple of weeks, so you got a chance to see it.
Okay, my report will be very quick. Let's see, Taylor Swift concert last night, pretty epic. Little bit, a lot of costumes, very interesting. I have two congratulations. As some of you know, my children are very much into softball and baseball, so congratulations to, I believe they are the eleven, twelve Little League Boys for St. Mary's County. They made it, they are the District Seven Champions, which is our Little League District, so they are going to the state tournament, and that is a St. Mary's County team. The Hughesville eight-ten boys also won District Seven, and that, the way the lines are, half of the county has to play Hughesville, and the other half has to play St. Mary's. So those of us in the northern end, we play with Hughesville, so those boys are heading to Baltimore City to play on the Under Armour Field outside of Fort McHenry this weekend for their state tournament. So congratulations to those, and we do have numerous students in our schools that are playing on both of those teams, which hopefully will bode well for our high school teams moving forward. So congratulations and good luck.
Good. This is a great time of the year, because this is an opportunity where things slow down just a little bit, so board members and staff members can take some time off and relax, rejuvenate, and renew ourselves. So this is a board that likes culture. So I've been going to some plays, too. This is not my real report. My real report is about talking about the Lunch and Learn program, but I've gone to several plays, and I love the theater. I went to the Kennedy Center to see Ain't Too Proud to Beg, The Life in Times of the Temptations, and then I went to Center Stage in Baltimore to see Stacks, about a recording company in the sixties with people like Otis Redding, Isaac Hayes, Rufus Thomas, Carla Thomas, and people like that, and it was a wonderful play. Before the play began, there was a disc jockey dressed in seventies attire with the big Afro, and had two go-go dancers and a dance floor, and the people who came to see the play could dance like an hour before the show started, and that was a wonderful performance. So I will, I do have a ticket to go see Nine to Five. I like to support our local theatrical groups, and we have a lot of talented people in the county, so it's good to support the arts right here in the county. But my real report is about the Lunch and Learn program, which took, is at, I visited at Lexington Park Elementary School, and it's a free summer program that provides lunch and learning activities for students. It is an extended learning program, and it's offered for children up to ages eighteen years old for eleven weeks in beginning June the ninth through the sixteenth. So it's held actually at four locations, Lexington Park and Greenview Knowles, and Greenview Knowles is the only one that just have lunch only, but they give out free books to the students, and it's from eleven to twelve-thirty, Monday through Thursday. Then it is also held at George Washington Carver School from noon to one-thirty, and it is also hosted at the Lexington Park Library on Fridays from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty through August seventeenth. That's on Friday only. And each week, they have a specific topic and a different activity for each day during that week. And during my visit at Lexington Park, the theme was camping, the great outdoors. Student made, students made binoculars and were read a story by the campfire. It was a paper campfire that was in the classroom, and it was very creative. The students, parents, and childcare providers expressed positive comments on the benefit of the program. And here are some of the comments they said about the program. Wendy Binkley, who is the Judy Center Specialist for both Green Holly Elementary School and George Washington Carver, said, she's thankful that SMCPS supports us so that we can provide meals for children in our communities, and that our partners are vested in providing enriching activities for children. Then, Fernetta Carson, Program Assistant at Green Holly and George Washington Carver Judy Center, said, I love the family engagement, parents, grandparents, daycare providers, aspect doing Lunch and Learn. The adults provide guided instruction for activities for learning. This is our eighth year. Kids are safe, kids are fed, and kids are learning. Okay, and I talked to some of the students. One of them said, Zianne said she likes making crafts, Sanaya said she likes going out and doing different things at the Lunch and Learn program, and getting free books and doing crafts, and Olivia said she likes reading the books. And I want to thank our many partners, and there are many, SMCPS Judy Center, SMCPS Food and Nutrition Services, St. Mary's County Library, St. Mary's County Safety and Security Department, St. Mary's County Health Department, MedStar, St. Mary's Hospital, University of Maryland Extension, Elms Environmental Center, Great Mills High School STEM students. I am so proud of them, and they are a whole list of partners. And I want to thank my board members and the superintendent for making sure we have programs like this for the students to provide meals for them, because we are always concerned about our students, especially the ones who are on free and reduced lunch. We always wonder how they're going to be fed, because many of them get breakfast, lunch, and snacks, and that service is, would not be provided if it were not for our Lunch and Learn program, so. I thank our partners, and it's a laundry list. Take advantage of the program, it's free. The adults participate, and I think their lunch is maybe three dollars and fifty cents for parents who can't afford lunch, but their children will get it for free. Thank you.
I took advantage of the opportunity to watch the fireworks launched by the Hollywood Volunteer Fire Department. I'm very fortunate, I live not far from there, and so I can sit out on my back deck and watch them go up over the trees and enjoy that. I'd also like to let everyone know that normally our student board member would be here. This would be her first meeting, Lake Meadows, but due to a family emergency, she's not here with us. She does send her apologies, and I certainly assured her that she's where she needs to be.
Uh, let's see, before the Fourth of July, did the high school graduation task force meeting, meeting number fourteen? Fourteen meetings so far for that. We are closing in on recommendations that will ultimately be presented back to the Maryland State Board of Education, Maryland State Department of Education Board, probably in August. That is our, that is our, that is our goal. So we'll look forward to that, and we'll, once that's finalized, we'll come back and share that with you. We did go before the Commissioners of St. Mary's County yesterday for acceptance of the Project Serve grant. Again, those federal dollars, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, I think, a hundred and eighty-seven, a hundred and eighty-nine, that will allow us to continue the counseling services that we're providing for students and staff in the community. Again, through incredible partnerships, one of the primary partnerships of that is Walden. They're, they're just, they're just incredible people that work at Walden and have been giving great support to students and staff. And then we went before to have approval of the movement of categorical funds, so that we can employ the two coordinators that are part of the governing workforce, Senate Bill twelve sixty-five. That's the Coordinator of Mental Health Services and the Coordinator of School Safety. They are currently out for advertisement. The positions will close, the advertisements will close sometime this week, and then we'll begin interviewing, and we hope that by August first, we will have people selected to start that incredibly important work before our kids re-enter our building in September. You were talking about great plays. Let's all keep in mind that right now, we have a lot of children who are preparing for Mary Poppins. Mary Poppins starts July twentieth and runs through July twenty-eighth. There are evening shows and matinees, and that's always a great time at Great Mills High School. And although I haven't had an opportunity to visit them so far this week, I'm hoping to get there tomorrow, talk about other partners, the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Department, Project, the Dare Camp is going on at Leonard Town Middle School, and that's an incredible, that's just, that's just an incredible service with the kids. They get to really, you get to really explore a lot of different topics, and that's been ongoing for as long as I can remember. So be looking for Twitter, and as we go and visit that, I believe that Dr. Montgomery and I are going to try to get there tomorrow, and see what fun projects they have. But yeah, it's a little bit quieter time. It's a little, it's a little quieter, where we really can spend a little hunkered down time to get, to move through all the things that need to happen in the summer to be ready for a successful opening in school in September. But that's all I have, so thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, let's see, no definitions, no public hearing, uh, public comment?
Yes.
Okay. All right, you can make your way to the podium. I will read this. The board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about that that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. We will not permit comments criticizing staff or students since it is outside the scope of public comment. We also sit as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that might influence our ability to deliberate. To maintain the ability of the board, any comment, or to rent, to maintain the ability of the board to render a fair and unbiased decision, comments regarding individual student or personnel issues cannot be presented. Speakers may sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. If you have any written statements, please give them to Kathy Cansini, and she will make sure that we receive them.
Thank you.
You're good to go.
Good morning. My name is Jenna Eschenbrenner. I am both an employee of St. Mary's County Public Schools and a mother to three students, rising STEM nine, along with eighth and sixth graders. My youngest was in the STEM Academy in fourth and fifth grade, but was not selected for continuing STEM six despite a cumulative three point four GPA. I'm here to continue to engage the Board of Education regarding opportunities for enhancement of our STEM program. Recent discussions among STEM families, which had origins and challenges at the middle school level, have identified three opportunities that will benefit the entire STEM Academy across all grade levels. First, we continue our appeal to you to establish a STEM Advisory Board that governs the entire program from elementary through high school. Second, we request the BOE direct a review of current application acceptance procedures and guidelines for continuation in the STEM Academy once enrolled. Third, we request SMCPS establish and communicate metrics and measures used to determine the success of the STEM program. To support moving these important efforts forward, we are researching successful STEM programs and preparing questions and recommendations to submit to the BOE with the ultimate goal to strengthen and improve our STEM program beyond what the three individual STEM schools can achieve independently. Regarding establishment of an advisory board, research demonstrates precedence both locally and nationwide supporting the benefits associated with directing boards. Although different in scope, both the Finance Advisory Board and the Chesapeake Charter School Alliance Board of Directors successfully guide or direct the long-term success of those programs. The STEM Academy would truly benefit from the establishment of an empowered advisory board that we envisioned would emulate aspects of these boards and incorporate characteristics of successful STEM boards and councils across the nation. Second, we must evaluate and revise STEM acceptance criteria and how it is applied. This is especially critical, given the recent discrepancies identified in the two thousand eighteen STEM six selection process and the information shared with families. We propose that when SMCPS chooses forty-eight third-grade students to join the STEM Academy, that these students remain enrolled in STEM through high school graduation, assuming the student consistently meets criteria set forth in the academy handbook, or leaves the academy voluntarily. Should spots become available, a fair and clearly communicated application process would identify replacement students for those vacant spots, as well as a waiting list. Lastly, to effectively improve the STEM Academy, SMCPS must establish and communicate how it characterizes success of the STEM Academy. While the STEM handbook clearly states the mission of the Academy, it remains silent on specific metrics and measures of success. Once these are identified, measured, and analyzed, we can establish goals for improvement. This should be a foundational activity for the STEM Advisory Board. In summary, we would like to engage with the superintendents to develop the charter for the STEM Advisory Board. We request a review of current application acceptance procedures and revised guidelines for continuation in the STEM Academy once enrolled, and request that metrics and measures to evaluate the STEM program be established and communicated. These initiatives are essential to both overcome identified challenges and also to strengthen the STEM program. Thank you for your time and attention to this important educational challenge here in St. Mary's County.
Thank you. Did we anything else, Kathy? Okay. All right, next up is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And after that, we have Mrs. Lisa Bachner with our policy IK grading for elementary schools.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning. I think it's the Lisa Bachner Show for this morning. Kelly Hall is going to join, Dr. Hall is going to join me in a few minutes, so. Good morning again. I'm going to be sharing with you the second reading for the grading policy for elementary schools. Again, a lot of this is reiterated from our first meeting with the first reading with the Board of Education, and elementary schools will be transitioning to using a standards-based report card for elementary students' grades K through five. Currently, we have those report cards in pre-K, K one and two, and next year, third grade will be joining using the standards-based report card. Standards-based report card will be used for fourth graders the following year in two thousand and eighteen, twenty, and then followed by fifth graders in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Hence, the need to revise the policy at this time, so that we are current in what we're doing and prepared to go forward for the next couple of years. The first reading took place on June thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, with a suggestion to look more closely at the definition of standard. Ms. Bailey, I think you're the one who shared with that. I did have the opportunity to do two things. I met with Ms. Ellis and Ms., I just forgot her name.
Ramsey.
Ramsey, thank you, on the twenty-eighth, and they're the co-chairs of the Standards-Based Report Card Committee. And we took a look at it, and with other policies, too, and made sure that the standard, the intent of the policy is truly to be a definition, not an explanation. The explanation would come through with examples in the regulation. So we did that. We also then went to the state documents that they have and looked at the frameworks that they have for K through five, and they do use that same definition of standard. So we thought at that point that we'd like to keep it as is with the definition that we have in place, but make sure that we really explain what that means, especially when it comes to how we're going to assess those standards with partial command, strong command, and not yet met in the regulation. Public comment took place on June twenty-seventh. At that time, there was no public comment. So these are just the changes that we made, and as I said, we have not proposed any changes since the initial. We took out the piece about grading and talked about student academic progress and how it would be reported of mastery of the standards. We also added the word electronic, because currently, if you remember, our policy hadn't been revised for quite some time. We did not have electronic communication at that time, so we needed to add that. And we also took the interim reports out that will be issued at midpoint during each marking period, because for the standards-based report card, we don't do interims. We are starting work on the regulation this afternoon, if this policy is approved. And one thing, we're going to be very, very clear, I just wanted to emphasize to you all that, in the regulation will be very clear about interim reports stay in place until people transition to the standards-based report card. So it will be very clear that next year, fourth and fifth graders will get interims and report cards, and then the following year, fifth graders will still get interims and report cards until that transition to the standards-based report card takes place. We took out the word under promotion and retention of students. We took out the word grades and just added an S to the word report cards. And then we fixed a typographical error, error, under acceleration of grade placement. It said constantly when it should have said consistently. And then we changed the language, because as I said, it was an older document, and we needed to be current with the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards, and then changing the objectives to standards, because it is the state language also. We took out the definitions of grade and interim progress report, and then we changed the report card definition to take out grades and instead replace it with academic progress. And of course, we added the definition of standard as a learning goal for what students should know and be able to do at the end of each grade level. To be very clear, the only difference between our wording and MSD's, instead of students, they say the word learner. So we kept students as is, because that is in all our documents for our county. And just a summary of what I just went over, we did a word grading change to academic progress. We added the electric, along with the written. We removed interim progress points at the midpoint. We're going to be measuring by report cards academic progress rather than grades. We made a correction of, from constantly to consistently, and we changed the Maryland State Curriculum to the Maryland College and Career Ready Standards, and again, we changed objective to standards. Definition changes, we removed grade definition, interim progress definition, changed the word grade to academic progress, and added this definition of standard. And we recommend at this time, after the second reading, that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented. No questions?
No questions, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
I just have, thank you very much for checking on that.
Yep.
And then I have talked to some parents that are in this turnover, you know, between the standards base and the grades, and I, I know that everyone's probably going to go around and have, when they have their back-to-school nights, especially now, elementary school, they're going to talk about this again. I think there's a, there's a little bit of, some of the parents, like, I think we just have to be very careful, and I'm not an educator, to not use a lot of educator terms, right? I mean, it sounds really silly to say, but, you know, you guys, it's your career, so you throw it around all the time, but just as a parent, you know, you just want to know how, how your student is doing, right? Are they, are they here, here, or here? And if you just, if you use a lot of industry terminology, I think it, it, I don't know what word I want to use. It kind of.
It doesn't translate well.
Right, it doesn't translate well, and it just, it kind of makes them anxiety, you know, especially, especially.
The whole purpose of this is to make it clearer and more easy for the parent.
And I think this does that. I just hope that when it, when it goes to the back-to-school nights at the elementary schools, it stays the same way, so it's on just simpler terms for everyone, because a lot of people are very excited about it, because it gives specific examples and, I guess, you know, specific objectives that they know that their child is or is not reaching or doing, but just to kind of keep it simple. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and I think that's really important, too, because think about how many years it's taken us to unpack the standards ourselves.
Right.
Since they just transitioned to many years ago. And so I think we have to be really careful, and I think that the teachers, I and the steering committee and the committee, they've done a lot of work on student work samples, you know, helping teachers develop their own ways of doing, so that not only do we have the terminology, we're going to have evidence to show them that that's what that standard means. This is what your child produces to me, that's, we're working on that. That's a really hard kind of lift, because it's a lot for our teachers to learn, but I completely understand that if it's taken us a long time to understand those standards, we need to remember who our clientele is and, and who, because that's our support to get kids to reach the standard.
Right, so, yes, I mean, and I think that's, that's done here, I just, and I truly believe it will translate everywhere. But I know when it was first presented a couple of years ago, you know, people were like, what, you know, whatever it was, so. All right, and that's good job. That's good news also to think about as we start our work on the regulation, if this is passed today, this afternoon.
Right.
Mrs. Washington?
Oh, no questions. Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that, to Mrs. Bailey's point, I think if they start with what the goal of making this change has been and continues to be, that parents and students have a specific understanding of what they're able to do, what they're demonstrating, and what they still need to achieve, that that tells people a lot more than whether or not they're getting an A or a C or whatever. I know that doing this is going to require a great deal more work on the part of teachers, which is one of the reasons that we're doing away with interims. At the same time, what can you tell me to reassure me that parents are not going to be waiting until a report card comes out to, so that they understand how their child is doing during that period of time? And will that be consistent across all schools?
Well, this year in third grade, as they're transitioning, we're also going to have the documentation of their progress in Home Access Center. So we're working on that piece, too, and it's very different, because before, we entered grades in HAC and not standards, but we are going to, we've been working, actually, for the last year and a half with Lori Wyman, the Office Accountability and Assessment, to then actually put the standards in Home Access Centers, so teachers and parents will be able to see the progress on the standards in HAC. So we're going to try that in third grade this year. There's already been a pilot group that tried this at the end of last year, just to see how it goes. I think they started with mathematics, to see how it went, and it went all right. So that would be a way for parents to still be able to log on, to see how their students are doing. They're just not going to get a report card at the end of the first quarter. We are hopeful that it's very, very successful, and I think the recommendation is, is then we go both ways the next year in HAC and second, third, and fourth, and then, you know.
Are you anticipating, then, with it being in HAC, that it will be sort of a living, breathing as more assignments come in, that where they are on that continuum will be reflected on HAC?
Yeah, and HAC is, is that teacher grade book?
Right.
That people can see, so we're hoping that that would, and we felt third grade was the best time to do that, because parents are very used to using HAC in third grade, because that's the first year that HAC is available to them. So, but are there, we still have to have other forms of communication. We're still worried about, we're worried about parent conference day this year, because it's been shortened to half a day, so I know lots of discussions have been happening with different principals and myself, about what different alternatives we can do, so that we make sure that we're meeting the needs of every parent that requests a conference, or every teacher who needs a conference with certain parents. So those kind of things are still going to be a major part of our communication with parents, as well as the portfolio I talked about, where we're documenting student work.
I think, you know, one of the things you, I would like to see us pursue is making sure that if a student is not meeting those standards, and that they're lagging behind.
meeting those standards and that they're lagging behind where they should be, that, that we have a documented way of showing that, that parents and students have been notified of that fact. Um, and I say that, you know, former ICU nurse, if you don't document it, it didn't happen. Um, a- and I, I think that's really important, especially as we're making this change over. Um, I don't want people to be surprised, um, that, that, that the teacher thinks that they've told them and somehow that message didn't get communicated, that it was heard in a different way. Um, so I, I think finding that, finding that happy medium of, um, when is it important to reach out, um, and how would you reach out to let a, a parent know that there are concerns, um, and not to wait until that last moment or, you know, or wait until the report card comes out and the parent goes, wait a minute, what?
Right.
Um.
Are, are you saying that since,
Since we're not doing interims.
Since we're not doing interims, to have some mechanism in place to still, um, to still have some type of communication with the parent midpoint in the semester?
At some, at some point in the marking period, um, that there needs to be um, a, um, a well-spelled-out way of communicating with parents, so that teachers understand what they need to be doing and parents,
Separate from HAC though.
Um, I, I don't know if it needs to be separate from,
Yeah, no, the, the biggest thing is we need to use Home Access Center to its greatest potential, which means that, that all of this is recorded and, uh, the, so the challenge I've always had with interim, so interim progress reports came out in the early nineties, I think was that was when they were first, because people were like, I got a report card and I have no idea how they, how the child ended up. So we said, well, wait, halfway through the marking period, we'll send kind of a check home, and that'll be the interim progress report. So that means that basically a teacher is doing grades eight times a year as opposed to four. As of right now, at the secondary level, they're using Home Access Center, they're using their TAC, they have grades that go along. The, the interim progress report, by the time it gets frozen, processed, sent home, checked, it's, it, the grades have continued on. So then when you go into Home Access Center, it doesn't really align to what was the interim progress report, because things went on. The interim is an out-of-date construct if you're using Home Access Center and TAC the way you're supposed to, which is the real-time performance of a child during the marking period. So,
The question becomes, is, um, are you able to log in as a system and determine, um, our parents' checking hack?
Yeah.
But see, but, but see, I, I would, I would,
May I, we check, so, I can pull the last time a parent logged in.
Right.
I can't pull, pull up the, the, you know, how many times.
Right, but, but you can, you can document when a parent has logged in.
The last, the most recent login by a, by a particular, when, however they logged in, but, yeah.
But I, but, like, when I log into HAC, I log in under each of my children, cause they're both separate. I can't.
Right.
My, my accounts aren't connected, but,
You should contact your, your teacher in the schools. They can be.
No, they can't.
Yes, they can.
No, they can't? They keep telling me they can't? See, look at Maureen. Maureen's like, oh, I don't know. But anyway, but I mean, I would, I would respectfully disagree with you, Kathy, because I think that it is a parent's responsibility to be focused and on their children's education. So I do not think it is our responsibility to continually notify or send out notices, hey, this is where your child is, hey, this is where your child is. And the reason I say that is because I think with the amount of additional work that our teachers are going to have to do with the standard-based reporting, to now make sure that they make contact with, I mean, let's take elementary school. If you have thirty-five kids in a classroom with thirty-five or seventy parents, thirty students, you know, if, if you have split homes, you know, then to put that burden on them now at the midpoint of a semester, when we already have a system in place.
The, the, the marking period's already the midpoint of the semester.
Right, but, I mean, so I just, I think some of the burden has to fall on the parents to make sure that they're, they're engaged.
And, and I agree, in an ideal world, that would be the case. It's, we don't live in an ideal world.
Right.
Um, and I'm not saying that, um, you know, it has to be the teacher calls, the parent, whatever. It is, but there has to be a consistent message, that if you want to know how your child is doing, then, then you need to be pulling up TAC, and you need to, um, and that's how you,
That I would agree with, yes.
That's how you're going to know.
Blast out HAC, yes.
And that, right, and, and, um, and then if there's, but if there's a significant change, I would still expect that a teacher's going to contact.
A competent teacher, when they see a child who is struggling, they do, they, they, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, and we, and we'll just reinforce that, we reinforce that practice.
I just think that this is, this is going to be a big change for people and, um, and, you know, if it's your first child going through, you, you may not notice, but if it's your third child going through, you're going to notice that, that this is really different. So I think having a consistent message, you're going to know how your child is doing, here's how you're going to know, and it's important for you to do this.
Right, and maybe, maybe the suggestion is, in order to get parents involved in HAC earlier, because when you come from second to third grade, like, your login's set up for your child in kindergarten or whenever you register them, but it's not necessarily communicated to you until they start getting grades. So maybe that's what has to happen, like, at the end of second grade, or when you register for kindergarten, or whatever. Well, but, see, then you have the whole, you have to log into HAC to get your teachers, and then that's when, you know, when the list comes out, every parent who doesn't have a HAC ID calls their school secretary to get it. You know, but I mean, if, if we, if we preempt that at the beginning, or at the end of the, of the school year, and say, hey, here is a packet, here is your child's login that you will need for the upcoming year, and start educating them at that point, rather than waiting until, you know, you're in the first marking period,
Right.
then when they hit the ground running in third grade, they are, you know, they can already be familiar with it.
I think that's a great thing to even share this afternoon with the principals who are going to be present about making sure that's part of their open house too, for third grade families.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a lot of discussion, sorry.
Sorry, I, that's okay. I mean, these are things we need to talk about.
You know, some of the things, it, it helped me to be able to mull over it for a bit, um.
The biggest thing that we're emphasizing is that parents who have children starting third grade this year, this is the exact same process that they had the year before. This, for them, this isn't something new. This is a continuation of what they had in second grade as far as the way we're communicating their chi- their children's ac- academic progress.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have anything else?
No, I took notes.
All right, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board approve policy AK as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Dr. Hall and Ms. Bachner.
Yeah, I'm going to move over, cause I think Ms. Hall is going to start.
Good morning.
Let's see what we can talk about this time.
This is exciting things. Not that, not that the other one wasn't.
All interrelated.
Elementary school.
Comprehensive literacy, a comprehensive literacy plan is based on academic standards that spiral throughout, you know, all twelve years of instruct, thirteen years of instruction.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is, uh, some happy news. So, um, we're just going to begin by giving you a little bit of background. So back in October, um, MSD notified all of the local jurisdictions that there was a forty-five million dollar grant from the federal government to improve literacy from birth through grade twelve. So that makes it a little unusual this year, and local education agencies were encouraged to apply for it. Well, we did. And I'm very pleased to tell you that we have been awarded one point six million dollars over a three-year period of time, and the breakdown for that is in year one, six hundred thousand, year two, five hundred thousand, and year three, five hundred thousand. Now, there were terms and conditions in this grant. There were five required keys, um, for literacy. One was educational leadership, and that really, um, in terms of our plan, really addressed making sure that every educational leader, every instructional resource teacher, every administrator in a building really got some professional development on literacy becau- and what to look for. Because sometimes, you know, you're a, you're a great administrator, but your background is math. So we wanted to really focus on that, um, some strategic professional learning from birth all the way to, um, grade twelve. Uh, a continuity of standards-based instruction, which we've just talked about in our report card initiative, marries up very nicely with that. Comprehensive series of assessments, and then tiered instruction and intervention. So with that, um, the grant requirements, uh, indicated that we needed to have a comprehensive literacy plan as a draft that included those five keys, and that was, um, developed by Mrs. Bachner and the content supervisors. We also were required, as we prepared that, to survey every teacher in the system, which we did, to see how many, um, responses they, you know, we were able to get if they chose to respond. We also needed to survey the early childhood partnership, birth to five. And that was not very clearly defined. So what we did is we went to the Head Start Policy Council, the Early Childhood Action Committee, that's a part of local management, and the Judy Center Steering Committee. So we had about thirty-five people, um, representing various community agencies and parent groups, childcare, and they all responded. So that gave us some real, um, direct feedback about what direction we wanted to go in terms of what our plan would look like. And then we were required to adhere to the application components and the budget with a strong evidence on evidence base. Um, everything is about evidence base right now, and that includes not just activities, but practices and products.
So we took all of the information and all the things we had to put into the grant for our application, um, and, um, thinking about year one, six hundred thousand dollars, year two, five hundred, and year three, five hundred, how we wanted to allocate that money to best meet the needs. So our grant allot, allotments would include four staff positions, one ten-month position, and these are all called literacy coaches. Uh, would be focused on birth through grade two, um, and it would include opportunities with childcare providers for that birth piece all the way through the parents of young children. So we would encompass our programs also through grade two in the public schools. Um, one ten-month, um, focused on elementary school grades K through five, and then two eleven-month focused on secondary grades six through twelve. Um, part of what our reading and research had to do was also look at the state literacy plan, and throughout the state literacy plan, a big component was transition, to make sure there is a, a transition literacy plan, birth through twelve, and there was continuity. Um, and so these coaches, by putting one at each, at least one at each of those levels, would help with that transition, because we do have plans, if this is approved and these positions are approved, to make sure we have that dialogue with those four individuals, to make sure that we're talking about that transition and that literacy plan birth through twelve with all members of that team. Um, we also, as we need to do research-based practices, um, we got a lot of information from the early childhood birth, um, through five community. Um, that conscious discipline was something die- they desperately, that social emotional learning was something they desperately were interested in getting training on and partnering with us. So that is part of the grant, to have a trainer come in and do that training with us for not only our school, SMCPS staff, but those community partners, and also to continue foundations training. Um, and the foundations training is exciting because it, it really ties into so many other things we're doing. It is, none of this is standalone. It really ties all into our comprehensive literacy plan, but it also partners beautifully into our content core curriculum as well as what we're doing with NSOL, which is the National Council of Intervention and Learning, that we're doing, um, partnership with MSD on another grant. And then Imagine Learning, we've talked to you all about Imagine Learning before, um, training and student subscriptions, so that allows us to do that. Um, the intent of that also is that might be the piece, the Imagine Learning Training and Student Subscriptions, we may have to, to think about budgeting for in the general fund after this year, when that hundred thousand dollars decreases from six. So that is our plan for that. I just wanted you to, to understand that. Um, and then we're hoping we can also do some of the conscious discipline and foundations training ourselves by getting trainer of trainers, so that cost would go down in those areas too. Um, and then professional development training funds would also be used. We, we, we feel that these, um, allocations and plans for use of the money will support our staff and students. It provides a designated literacy coach at all levels. We have none currently. Um, if you call, I mean, we have IRTs at elementary school and middle school, but we have nothing, no support at the high school level. So this would give us literacy coaches, um, at the high school. They do have a little bit different role, but it would give support for literacy in the high schools. Um, and also it would ensure vertical articulation, including our community partners, and it provides certified trainers, at least our first year, to be brought into our county to provide the training for our staff. For the both social, emotional, and the academic pieces, and then it provides resources and support to students that are research-based products and best practices. We had to prove that everything in the grant that we, um, propo- allocated was research-based. Um, we, just for your information, we're going to work throughout this fall to vet with all stakeholders, finalize and publish the St. Mary's County, um, Comprehensive Literacy Plan, because we just had to submit it in draft form. So what we will do, um, this fall is we'll use the incoming park data, as well as the information we have from NSOL Grant and Striving Readers Grant, to make sure that that's a comprehensive, um, literacy plan, so watch for that. So that should be coming soon to be out of draft form and published. So our recommended action, um, after questions that anybody may have, is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
I want to say that you all do an amazing job putting everything together in order to get a grant. You really do a lot of research, so I thank you for that. My question is, is, uh, really the birth through grade two. Um, you have community partners, which I'm guessing might be like, say, some daycare, some things like that. Now, for the training for these people, is that one person going to be going to each individual place? Or are you going to be bringing in people for training? Right, um, a combination. Um, so when we talk about the partners that we talked with, social services, childcare, uh, Promise Resource Center, childcare credentialing from MSD, some individual daycares that attend some of these meetings, so on and so forth. Um, what our plan is, is some of these training events with a conscious discipline trainer will happen in the evenings, and we'll provide childcare so that families can really come, and parents can come as well as these agencies. Also, that literacy coach is going to be working with different groups of people during the course of the day. So they might go to the Promise Resource Center, as an example, and offer a workshop, and there may be people, you know, going to that session, or to that location for a session. So it really, it's going to be at various locations, at various times, during the day, and in the evenings as well, so that we can make it as family-friendly as we can. All right, okay, thank you.
Um, the, uh, the grant is, is not a reoccurring of fund, I guess, right? It's just three years?
Yes.
So what happens to all your support staff after three years?
Good question, and that's written right into the grant, so it's four people. And, you know, when we look at our historical vacancies, we have four positions, you know, every year, that we can easily absorb these people, and they'll be certified at different levels. So it should not be a difficult stretch for the system to be able to absorb them. They're going to have a high level of credentialing as well and experience, so should not be difficult to either, um, have them apply for an instructional resource teacher or go into a classroom. And, you know, our real hope is that we have such good evidence that the federal government gives us more money to continue, but we do have a plan for those four folks.
And just to let you know, we're working with HR, because these job descriptions are different. A literacy coach is a little different. So we're working, starting to draft those, and it's very clear on the job application and when it will be posted. That is grant-funded, and it will have a start date, and after three years, it will have an end date. And we will make sure, um, I'll be part, and Ms. Hall, uh, Dr. Hall will be part of the, um, interview, that we will start and make clear at the beginning of every single interview, that everybody is clear that it is a grant-funded position that is slated to end in three years.
Right.
That's only fair.
Yeah. Thank you, so.
I have the same question that, um, Mrs. Weaver did about the, the childcare and how the outreach would, would be to them, so thank you for answering that. And then I just have one comment. The, um, literacy coach throughout the high school years, I think, is, um, is a great idea, cause that, you know, I mean, you don't, oh, so once you leave eighth grade, it doesn't mean that you're still not struggling in an ELA class or English one or two, or whatever it is, so I think that's, um, you know, it'll be a good resource.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you again for applying for the grant of forty-two million dollars, that you took the initiative. And I wanna thank you again for applying for the grant of forty-two million dollars, that you took the initiative to write the grant, and your, our grant was accepted, and we received, I think, with one point six million dollars, and we are a small system. So, we try to work, um, with resources that are available out there, financial resources to get the job done for students. I like the idea of the birth, uh, to, what is it, three years old, or two?
Two.
Great. Yes, I think that's wonderful from birth, because with the brain development, and all the research on that, that the, the child's brain is like a sponge, and parents and childcare providers need to do everything they can to stimulate that develop. Meant, a lot of parents don't know exactly what to do, but they can come to these classes that you have in the evening, and they can learn how to be more effective in teaching their child these literacy skills. And I, I think that's, um, great. Um, and I like the idea that what you did is all research-based. It's a lot of work to write a grant, it's not easy to write, and you did a fantastic job. So, thank you very much, and I, I would love to attend some of those classes that you have
Absolutely.
in the evening to see what you're teaching the parents, especially the birth, uh, to.
Absolutely.
Third.
Grade two.
Grade two, okay, I knew it was grade or age, but anyway, yeah, I think that is wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the earlier we start, the better. Thank you so much.
So, among those community partners, um, that you plan to utilize, um, are you anticipating going through different doctors' offices also to provide information so that especially, you know, new moms, um, can know that this is available?
Yes, and what we'll do through the Early Childhood Action Committee, we will, there are liaisons from the hospital, from the medical community, and actually on the Head Start Policy Council, there is a local pediatrician that is a part of their medical advisory group. So, we'll, we will work with them to make sure that we get the word out, saturate everything, and, um, you know, we're seeing, once people come to the conscious discipline trainings, we've offered a few at night, they want more. Everybody leaves saying, wow, this brain science, we just know more now, the medical community knows more. We have more people, um, wishing to come. So, yes, we're gonna reach out to the doctors, and we're gonna use those points of contact from those various partnerships to help us get the word out.
Super, thank you very much.
They were so excited to write for this grant, you know, they just, they, everybody.
Oh, yeah.
It was worth it.
It was, it was, it is, it is abs- it is absolutely worth it, but as each one of you have referenced, I mean, it is a great, it is a great deal of work, and it's extra work. It's, it's work that's not necessarily written in anybody's job description, and, um, certainly to Dr. Hall and to Ms. Bachner, um, pulling together all of the things that have to happen to submit, and then be successful. It, it really, it really speaks to the caliber of people with whom we work.
And Ms., and Dr. Hall was the author, she was our primary author of that grant, so, um, and she is a grant expert, so.
She is.
She doesn't wanna be known as.
She doesn't wanna be known as that, but, um, we, we helped. We helped greatly, but she really facilitated the entire process from beginning, and, and is still facilitating with MSD right now until we get our, so, she's helping with that.
So, just thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's very funny.
It was the whole division of it, it was our DOI team, really.
I, I know a lot of large systems have grant writers.
Oh, they have, yeah, they have full staffs.
But, um.
We had Dr. Hall.
We, we appreciate that you put on that extra hat.
Thank you, thank you. And I.
Maybe you should've gotten more than a man's size.
Well, I did have a moment of thinking that. But, you know, it is what it is, but I do hope I will make sure that the, the early childhood offerings that happen, I will make sure that each of you, I'll work through Mrs. Mancini, that you're aware when those things happen, and we're also gonna be putting those in schools as well, so I'll make sure that each of you get, get notified.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you for your interest.
Alright, may I have a motion for this recommended action item?
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant and the applicable budget, and the submittal of the grant budget to the commissioners of Saint Mary's County for their approval.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no additional items.
Oh, good.
Does anyone have anything else for board member time?
Nope.
Okay, um, for the future board meeting, watch those, uh, public announcements. We might have a board meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, because we had the two positions approved yesterday um, as a result of this s- s- school safety Senate Bill twelve sixty-five. So, um, that would be a quick meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-fourth. Otherwise, we will have a regular board meeting on August eighth at nine AM. And if we do have the Tuesday meeting in July, we will still have the one in August, one will not cancel out the other. Okay, so with that, we're gonna adjourn and take about a five-minute break, so they can get set up for the ethics work session.